Good evening and welcome to the Guilford Board of Education. This is an Operations Committee meeting tonight. We are interested in hearing from the public as we start to craft our 2025-2026 budget. I want to go over quickly what we're going to be doing tonight. We'd love to hear from the audience. Thank you for coming. We ask that you please state your name and address as you approach the podium, as well as please print your name legibly on the piece of paper that's at the podium. We're going to limit to four minutes per person. If there are groups, we'd like to hear from everyone. So Kristin will be our timer at three and a half minutes. She'll give a quick hand raise just to let you know where we are with time. I do want to go over the timeline of the budget a little bit here, just so the public knows exactly where this process is going. This is the very beginning of our budget process. Tonight, we will hear from the public. On Monday, the 28th of October, we'll meet with our district leadership team, where we will hear from them as well to get their input on the budget. From there, the budget will be with the administration as it's crafted, and we will be working as a board to give our input as well. On December 12th, we will meet and review the budget with our district leadership team. And two very important dates that I want to point out to everybody, on January 27th and January 28th, that's a Monday and Tuesday evening, we will be meeting to hear again from the public. This is once everyone has an opportunity to review the budget and give their input on it. We'd like to hear from everyone again. That is January 27th and 28th. As we move through the process, we'll be then meeting with the Board of Finance to finalize the budget, all coming down to our referendum, which is tentatively scheduled for April right now. So with that, I ask that everyone please approach the podium as you want to speak. We'd love to hear from you and proceed. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. May I just say one thing? Or two things. One is you'll notice that six of the nine members are here. The other three are not here due to illness. All of them wishes they were here, and we will certainly be sharing feedback with them. And I am going to request, if you are a student that's coming up to the podium, you do not need, and we suggest you don't, give your address. Please give your name and the school you attend. Adults, we would like name and address, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry. I have a short, prepared statement. Two minutes tops, I promise. Drew Sorico, 90 Whispering Woods Road. I'm up in North Country, if you guys may not know where that is. I just wanted to, but really, it sounds sort of formal, and this is like an intimate group, but, you know, I really wanted to take the time to thank you guys, your generosity and continued support of Guilford Hockey, who I represent, obviously, if you didn't know. It really is appreciated. The budget contributions made by this board and by proxy the Board of Finance and the amazing Guilford community has been vital to our program, and we couldn't do it without you guys. So we really, really do appreciate it. It's funny, there's a misperception that hockey's a sport for the wealthy, but the team, our team, represents families from all walks of life. We all bond together. We do whatever is needed to ensure our kids can play, have fun, and succeed. And the sacrifice of a hockey parent is pretty intense. I'm sure some of these guys will tell you. Not many people are built to drive four hours in a snowstorm at 5:00 AM on a Sunday morning, right, to watch eight-year-olds play a 40-minute game. That's what we do. And it's true, it can be expensive, but the boys have been working hard this summer. We did a lot of fundraising. The parents have worked hard. We're really trying to subsidize as much of this as we can. We're probably more expensive than the majority of sports that you guys help, obviously. But again, I want to be very clear, we could not meet our financial goals if it wasn't for your contribution. So we're so thankful for that. As hard as these kids work, they work as hard as any other sport. The parents and the kids, they're out there fundraising all summer long. We did multiple bake sales, a car wash, right? But we still need the support. This is a very expensive program, and you guys have been awesome there. Just a heads up, last season, we won 16 games. We made it to the second round of the CIAC tournament. It was a successful season. We were very proud of that. And we did it with 12 freshmen, which is pretty incredible. We did it with 12 freshmen, which is about, what, half our team last year? So this year, we're still young, but we're talented. We're looking for key senior leadership, two are right behind me right here. We think we could actually build on that success. I wish the coach was here, because I was going to turn to him and be like, maybe a state championship, you know? But, you know, to get a little philosophical here, it's not just the program's success that you guys have helped us with, just to make the program possible. Anybody who's played any sport, certainly hockey because of the things I mentioned, we're in a trench together. I mean, this is, it's an intense commitment from when these kids are four years old to go through what we've been through. It helps create memories. It builds character. It gives these young men a chance to achieve something really special. And, you know, personally, I think that these types of programs, like, this is the stuff that should be nurtured. These opportunities are really, you know, what should be provided, and in my opinion, exactly what our tax dollars should be going for. That's the whole point of this. It's really for these kids and the opportunity that we're affording them. And we couldn't do this without you. So I really just wanted to get those two points across. So again, thank you. I was going to say, boys, can you stand? There's only two of them here, but we appreciate it. So really, from us, all of us, our community, the hockey community, we wanted to thank you for believing and supporting the Guilford Gritzlys hockey program. So thank you guys so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You can say whatever you want. Got it? Hold your address. I think you can follow up on it.
My name's Charlie Peary. Obviously, I tend here at the high school. And it's kind of hard. I just wanted to talk about the value that it's brought to me as a student and as a person as a whole. And it's kind of hard to quantify, like, the impact that it's made on me, but we can do it in terms of economics. So your enjoyment of something is measured in Udals. And to say and try to put hockey into this standard, the more you repeat an action, it's supposed to go down and down, but for hockey, it's just, that doesn't happen. It doesn't apply. You can't quantify, like, the difference it makes on people's lives. Like, recently, one of my buddies, very close to me, going through a hard time in his life, but he wasn't alone, and there wouldn't be a second where he would think he's alone. We have one person here today, and, you know, it's a 23-person team. And within that 23-person team, there's so much more. There's the support of all the families, all of the students themselves, and it unites everybody together. It's not like any other sport where it's like, you know, there's a little bit of division or it's not, you know, as for the school, but everybody was there for him. And I think that's something that's really important, because I don't think I've ever seen that. Maybe it's a little bit different circumstances, but I've never seen that with any other sport. And I want to talk about what got me playing. I had the option to sit out my freshman year, like, continue playing my club team, but my freshman year, after the last evaluation, our team captain, Tommy Zamba, came up to me, sat me aside, and said, "I have one year left. There's nothing left for me, so you're the future of Guilford Hockey, and I want you to prosper, and I want you to continue this culture and nurture it to something better than I left it to you." And those words and just the attention and the culture that I knew I'd be walking into was something, you know, it's hard to explain to somebody who hasn't been there, hasn't played, hasn't put in all the work that we put in together. Recently, I had to log it for my colleges, you know? How much did you do of this activity? It was over 1,000 hours, and I don't even play in the spring. You know, maybe here and there in the summer, but 1,000 hours from fall to winter. It's unreal, and that's what builds a family. I live with them, and that's just how it is. And I just wanted to thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're done.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Eric Haskell. I live on 189 Little Meadow. I'm here in replacing my wife, and I will have a difficult time replicating her vitriol, but I'll do my best. Okay, my thing is more academic in nature. It's about financial literacy. I think we're in trouble in that it's a state mandate. We have 100 students in it. Nobody took it last year, so we're 300 students behind. You know, 200 students in a class, I don't know if that's accurate. I think that we need to have a full-time teacher, and we need to be able to put all these kids that want to take it. For instance, my son's in AP Chem. That's first and second period. The only, they only offer financial literacy first and second, or I don't even know if it's first and second, but during that time. So if he wants to take financial literacy, he would have had to back out of an academic class. That's important for his, for getting into college for him. My wife thinks that things like enrichment in the summer have to go by the wayside if it's a budgetary thing, because it's a state mandate. We're short a teacher, not short, I think we didn't, we have a teacher that wasn't required in elementary school. Can that money be moved over to hire a new teacher for financial literacy? I don't know. We're just worried that, like, he won't be able to take it next year. And then he's a senior, and he wants to take another class, or any student wants to take another class, that they think is required for them to get into the college they want to go to, but they can't take it because they have to take a financial literacy class that wasn't offered at any other time. That's a bummer for a student. And I hope that doesn't happen, but, you know, if we get on it, maybe we can help all the students get it and not have to sacrifice even hockey. You know, you've got to take financial literacy. I don't have time for that. I don't think that's the case. But anyway, all right, I think that's it for me.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Financial literacy is a state-mandated course that every student in Guilford is required to take to graduate. So if you're, and I don't know what happens if you, are they going to hold your diploma? Is there any way that they can have some summer offerings? Is there any way they can have? I don't think, I think it's mandated, you can't do independent study, but I don't know if a summer course would be for kids that really want to stay academically on.
This is all good info. Thank you.
Of course, I don't know. Anyway, thank you for your time. You guys are great. My son loves Guilford High School. Matter of fact, he's having the time of his life. It's fantastic.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Valerie Ferrucci, 1595 Little Meadow Road. I have a fourth grader and a sophomore in the district, and I'm here tonight to speak for Italian teacher, an additional Italian teacher for the high school that I believe is needed. So just a little backstory on my sophomore. She was never really engaged in the world language offerings prior to high school. It was just her experience. She didn't enjoy it in elementary school. She decided to switch to French and Adams, which was not a great decision. We were a little nervous of where she was going to go once high school started, and then we got an email over the summer that Italian was going to be offered, and she was just elated. It was perfect timing with our household. My husband speaks Italian. His parents are from Italy. We also had an exchange student from Italy last year, so it was just this really, like, exciting moment for her to be able to, you know, engage with that language. She enjoyed it tremendously last year. She's in Italian II this year, and she would like to take Italian III, which right now is not being offered. I know it's new to the district. I believe the classes, I have spoken to Ms. Chafe about it, and she's aware of the issue. I'm just hoping that it does make it into the budget, if that's the direction that, you know, everyone would like it to go into. I know that, not only speaking for my daughter, the classes I hear are very full. There's a lot of Italians in this area, so I think they're engaged in the culture and the language, so just something that I would really like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have two board members whose children are also in Italian as well.
Do you want addresses on here?
Yes, please.
Yeah. I'll link it here.
Hey, all. It's budget season. Good to see you again. Nate Jacobson, 1470 Long Hill Road, father of three current students in the Guilford Public Schools and a 2023 graduate. I want to start with thanking you guys for all the support and the progress that we've made over the last four or five years. You guys know I typically am advocating for something more on the social, emotional, athletic realm than the academic end, and you guys have been very supportive, as we've already heard from some folks today, and it does really go a long way in every student's kind of social, emotional being and happy to be at school. It's a passion of theirs. I want to thank you guys for your time, for your dedication, for your thoughtfulness, for your care that you put into a volunteer role. I get a sense of the time that you guys put in in meetings. I don't get a great sense of the time that you put in doing your homework outside of meetings, but I have a feeling that it is very significant. Every time I view a board meeting, whether it's live, whether it's on video, I'm incredibly impressed with your professionalism, with your intellect, and probably more than anything else, the collaborative method that you guys use. I told Dr. Freeman, you know, last year's budget process, I was just so impressed with the conversations that were taking place. I'm here tonight to bring light to an area of Guilford High School that is rarely noticed, the weight room. I'm guessing that most people in this room have never been in the weight room. It's located on the bottom floor of the brick building right over here, underneath where central office and other GPS services are being done. To help you visualize what it looks like, if you haven't been in the weight room, think of a 1980s football-style weight room, very large and spacious, but with old outdated equipment, with some modern aerobic equipment that has been sprinkled in. I want to share a perspective on the weight room. Sorry, share perspective on the weight room. It is the only part of this campus that has not been renovated. This may come as a surprise to people who come into the Guilford High Campus and see the modern standard of this building, the classrooms, the Performing Arts Center, the athletic fields, the library that weren't here. There's top-notch, that, you know, nobody can argue with that. My career path in education and athletics and the phys ed community provide me kind of with a unique perspective on Guilford's facilities and fitness program in comparison to those of our surrounding towns. What I observe is that students' wellness and experience is constrained because of the lack of staffing and modern equipment in the Guilford High facility. My career has proven to me how students' training toward strength and fitness has the power to change their life. Working out can be a positive life force at any age. Working out during the formative ages of middle school and high school is invaluable. It builds confidence and a positive self-image that often lasts a lifetime. People may think that my pitch here is to benefit strictly student athletes. That couldn't be further from the truth. I envision a fitness center that would be a student-centered hub of activity that is A, an invaluable asset to the PE program, B, accessible to all students after school, and C, that could incorporate greater community use. So what is my ask? I ask school administration and the board to strongly consider an investment in the fitness center. For the fiscal year '26 operating budget, I ask leadership to consider adding a staffing component for the fitness center. Most of our surrounding high schools have a staffing component. The models and expenses vary from town to town, but I want to provide you with a document I have here, I'll give it to you in a minute, that lists some of the staffing expenses of surrounding towns. My ask related to the prospect of renovating the fitness center. I suspect a renovation is several years away. However, I'm hoping that leadership will consider if there are resources in the existing A&E for future projects of the capital bonding budget of this year, where an on-call engineer or feasibility study could estimate a scope and expense of the project. I'm wrapping it up here. I'm wondering if it would be possible to figure out those preliminary construction estimates this year and not have to budget the A&E into the fiscal year '26 budget. I look forward to continued dialogue related to the fitness center, and I thank you guys very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Lawton. I'm a junior here at Guilford High School, and I'm also captain of the lacrosse team. I would like to add on to what Mr. Jacobson said, and on behalf of the GHS weight room to start. I think that lifting weights and just getting into the gym is one of the most important parts of being an athlete here at Guilford. Obviously, it improves athletic performance and reduces the risk of injury, and also being in peak athletic shape can help athletes make it to the next step at college. But from personal experience, I think that confidence into the gym has led to great in confidence on the field. As a captain this year, I felt that without having access to the weight room, due to our coach being also the football coach, he hasn't had time to supervise our lifts as he did in past years. So I haven't had the opportunity to build a relationship with the underclassmen and the incoming freshmen that captains previously were able to build with me. I feel there's some sort of disconnect that has led to a lack of leadership on the lacrosse team. Even though it's a spring sport, I think that it's very important that the underclassmen get to know who's on their team, so that way when the season comes around, they can play and be in a good relationship with them. Also, leading on to that, the mental health aspect of lifting weights, and it proves self-esteem, proves confidence, as I said before, and exercise also releases endorphins, which make you happier. There's also the convenience factor of the GHS weight room. It's right here, and after school, as it were, two years ago, we would attend the weight room after school without having to go somewhere else. It's also free. I remember last year, we didn't have access to the weight room, and it was a big burden on my parents to be able to, one, pay for another gym membership, and also drive me there. This year, I've been able to drive myself, and I've been able to pay for my own gym membership, but I think for underclassmen, it's very important that they have some way to, you know, get into the gym. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a senior here at Guilford High School. My name is Jonah Labadia Cologne. I'm the captain of the wrestling and lacrosse team, and I'm also here to talk about the weight room. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your support throughout Guilford Athletics. But when talking about the weight room, I remember the years where Michael were talking about, when we would work out in the fall here with the wrestling team, and I would work out with the upperclassmen. That's when I really got to learn about them and about teams' past tendencies, and that really helped me learn and build relationships with the team that helped me get to the point where I am comfortable with them, and that allowed me to be a captain and have that extra, you know, insight on being what a leader is outside of, you know, your spring or your winter season. This past wrestling year, we had a packed wrestling room, and we were always considering about maybe splitting, so someone else can go work out, someone else can wrestle in the room down below, and then vice versa the next day. But the problem was supervision. We couldn't really split properly because, well, you know, our coaches have jobs outside of wrestling, and it was tough getting guys in the weight room. And this year, we have even more kids. We have, I believe, around 13 seniors and a lot of freshmen coming in. I think we have maybe upwards of 40 guys this year, and guys and girls. And that, the room, wrestling is such a, yeah, everyone's so interwoven with each other, and it's a really physical context for it, but emotionally as well, everyone's in there, it's a second family, a family away from home. And being able to, you know, grow as a team out there via leadership, via actually physically lifting each other and supporting each other through a lift or in through practice, I feel like that would really help in the weightlifting aspect. And speaking of the quality of the weight room, I've never really personally had a moment where I didn't have some kind of residue on my hands afterwards. And I would love it if it was more up-to-date, up-to-standard, like this lovely school is, really. I know I might not be here when it's done, but it's nice to think that maybe my younger brother coming up can experience a weight room where, you know, maybe I helped, you know, make that decision, push it forward. But I really hope that me coming here, you know, pushes this decision, and thank you for your time.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Chitrist. I live on Millstone Drive. I want to echo what the other parents said about the support and dedication the board has always shown to us and for letting us come and speak to you about this important topic. Right now, I currently serve as the treasurer of the Guilford High School Music Boosters. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Music Boosters, which is a dedicated group of over 100 GHS families supporting the high school music program. I'm excited to share that our music program continues to thrive, thanks to the budgetary support that has allowed it to grow and to evolve. This year, 286 students are participating in ensembles, with an additional 72 enrolled in various music classes. Those classes include the digital audio production, which is now in our second year. This class was made possible by a generous grant from the Guilford Fund for Education, and it already is one of the most popular electors at the school. For these students, the music program is more than just an activity. It is a vital source of community mentorship and personal growth. We know, we've seen that. And we've seen how, the evidence that the entire town takes pride in the program's success. This includes a full schedule of concerts at the high school and in the community, such as the tree lighting concerts, the Guilford Fair Parade, and the Meals on Wheels fundraiser. It's always great to see our administrators or our board members come to the concerts to enjoy them. So in addition to the annual events, our students have opportunities not available in most districts, such as performing alongside the world-renowned musicians like Mo Pleasure and Joe McCarthy's band. They also perform in prestigious venues, Yale University's Woolsey Hall, and will be traveling to Italy in May, or April, to Italy in April. Our student musicians perform during football games, they perform during the theater arts classes, they're just really interwoven, what goes on in the school and the community. So as we look ahead to next year's budget, we ask you to remember the importance of supporting our student musicians, especially those also at Baldwin and Adams, who are the future of our program here at the high school. And the great news is, is participation at Baldwin is back to pre-pandemic levels, signaling that with continued support, the music program is on track for even greater success. Lastly, the students are benefited greatly by a wonderful faculty, the faculty who is very caring and dedicated, and I know it inspires them, including my son over here. So again, I want to stress the importance of it. We all have evidence that the music program is really important to our school and our community, and I thank you again for considering that and for letting us speak.
Thank you.
My name's Alyssa Stevens. I live at 135 Millstone Drive. In the article "Running on Empty: Teachers Are Not Prepared for Increasing Challenging Behaviors," it was highlighted that behavioral challenges in classrooms are increasing in both frequency and severity, leaving teachers ill-equipped to manage them. Common problems behaviors include bullying, tantrums, defiance, elopement, self-injury, aggression, emotional outbursts, and non-compliance. Alarmingly, over 70% of teachers report a recent rise in disruptive behavior, up from 66% in 2019. Another article, "Breaking Bad Behavior," revealed that most districts lack a clearly communicated and consistently applied protocol for managing behavioral disruptions. As a result, many teachers feel unprepared and poorly supported by school leaders. Furthermore, the training in evidence-based programs varies widely from teacher to teacher and school to school, complicating efforts to determine effective strategies. Interestingly, it was noted while educators generally acknowledge the rise in disruptive behavior, their perceptions differ on its scope. District and school administrators often believe the issue is confined to a small percentage of students with significant behavioral problems, whereas teachers estimate that nearly one-quarter of their students exhibit disruptive behaviors. This discrepancy is concerning, as disruptive behavior not only affects the learning environment for struggling students, but also disrupts instructional time for their classmates. Teachers estimate losing nearly two and a half hours of learning each week to the behavioral disruptions, accumulating almost three weeks of lost instructional time over the course of a standard academic year. Guilford is not exempt from these challenges, which span across grade levels in multiple schools. Based on personal experience, it is evident that we lack adequate support to help teachers manage these difficult behaviors. Therefore, I am requesting that next year's budget allocate funds to increase specialized support staff, such as behavior technicians, to assist with identifying the function of challenging behaviors and help to develop and implement appropriate plans and supports, creating a safe and conducive learning environment for all students. Additionally, I propose establishing a dedicated team at each school to respond to behavioral challenges without pulling essential staff away from their direct services to other students. For instance, if a social worker is responsible for running a lunch bunch and is then called with multiple other staff to assist in a classroom where a child is throwing objects, sometimes requiring that the classroom be evacuated because it's unsafe, it compromises their ability to provide critical services that may be part of another child's IEP. In an episode of Sold a Story, a study from the University of Houston explored the connection between reading difficulties and involvement in the juvenile justice system. juvenile justice system. In records reviews, there is a pattern, often starting in elementary school, that when kids are having a hard time learning, they act up. "I don't know how to read, and I don't want everyone to know about that, but I know how to make you laugh, therefore, I'm gonna be the class clown." Conversely, some children with reading difficulties remain silent. The link between reading problems and social and emotional issues is sobering. While numerous factors contribute to the rise in challenging behaviors in schools, we cannot overlook this one. I also request funding for more robust screening to identify at-risk children early, enabling timely intervention, as outlined in our SRBI manual, and that the intervention include direct and explicit instruction. With increased screening, we would likely require additional specialized staff to effectively implement the SRBI process and ensure its meaningful impact. Research shows that humans are born with brains that are wired to acquire spoken language. No one has to teach us how to talk. We learn how to talk by being talked to. We are not born with brains that are wired to read. An estimated 60% of children require direct and explicit instruction in reading, and among them, some need substantial support. Based on personal experience, we must do better to ensure all children are reading at grade level in classrooms that are minimally disruptive and emotionally safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That looks like it's it. Well, one more.
I'm here to talk about gender equity in the weight room, and just how football seems to be able to get in there in their offseason, and even boys lacrosse, too. And I play field hockey, ice hockey, and lacrosse here. And it's just, you don't really see it, like girls. And it's a big thing, because it helps with, like, injury prevention and just being a better athlete in general. I think, from my experience, field hockey tried to go in there. It didn't really work out. We just couldn't, we didn't really have, like, an instructor in there to lead us. So, this year, we took our offseason to Mangino's, and every girl had to pay out of pocket for that. Some girls were unable to do that. So, it just didn't give a fair chance to every single girl playing field hockey to go and do this with the team for team bonding and for their own good. And then also with ice hockey, we have tried many different weightlifting things in season. Last year, one was MB, which, again, girls had to, that added to their dues that they had to pay for. That was pretty much mandatory. It was kind of like you had to be there. So, that was parents paying to play the sport. So, I just think, like, if everyone had the opportunity to be in there without a cost, it would be very helpful, not only to female athletes, but to all athletes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Could you just put your name on the list behind you? It should be. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I think that's it. All right, wonderful. Thank you, everyone, so much. I want to reiterate a couple dates here, just so everyone has some important information. Again, the public hearing for the budget, once it is finalized and introduced, is January 27th and January 28th. Again, this will be an opportunity for the public to speak about the budget that has been crafted, and we, we really do value your input. I will say to everyone listening, not only are these opportunities available to you to give us your, your feelings and ideas, but we all have email addresses, as well as the timeline is published on the Board of Education website. So, there you'll be able to see the timeline and, and how to reach out to us. So, please, with, with any other opportunities you have or ideas you have, please email us. With that, does anyone have anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
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 All in favor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much.